I had no idea.
Yeah.
Good chance to play with you. I always wish that I listened to like podcasts.
Oh, yeah.
But I listen to a lot of worky kids.
No, I have talk radio.
But I never had any time.
PBS radio.
That's cool. That's very cool. Well, great to see you.
You too.
Hello. I will, for sure.
We'll go ahead and call the October meeting of Johnson City Board of Education to order. We appreciate everybody being here. It's always good to see a full house. We start our meetings with a moment of silence, so I'd ask everyone to join us in a moment of silence, and then we'll move on with the rest of our meeting. Thank you. Dr. Barnett's going to lead us in the pledge in the Pledge of Allegiance. So everybody please stand.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to have our opening. I think Dr. Stukes is going to give a presentation to us about the good things going on at Mountain View.
Hello.
Hello.
Can I do a quick point of acknowledgement? No, no signings.
Can we get maybe some amplification, Joe?
Dr. Stukes. Turn it off, turn it back on.
Chair, chair.
How was this? Thank you so much. Thanks for letting me have a few minutes tonight to thank you at Mountain View. In August, when we had our school board meeting, Mrs. McGill stated that we survived the first day of school. And today, on October 12th, I'm going to tell you that we survived another first day of school. So this year, we are adjusting to all of our new safety protocols with COVID-19 while still trying to find ways to meet the needs of students and families. Our students, teachers, and staff have done a great job wearing masks and following other safety protocols. I've really been bragging on the children especially. They've done a great job, and we're just trying to move along during the pandemic. Our teachers meet and plan weekly with their grade level teams, team members and other, and the instructional coaches. We ended the first nine weeks with 137 students participating in the remote learning program, and today we welcomed back about 65 of those students to improve some learning. We are continuing to strive for excellence in all that we do at Mountain View by working to provide the best instructional opportunities and a safe, clean, loving environment for all students. Speaking of clean schools, I hope you were able to catch the feature clip in the Johnson City Press a couple of weeks ago on our head custodian, Mr. Chauncey Smith. And if I could, I'd just take a moment to brag on him. If you don't know Mr. Chauncey, you need to meet Mr. Chauncey. I always call him the legend. He is very humble and does not like to accept a lot of praise, but he is definitely worthy of it. He is truly one of the hardest working people I've ever met in my life. Mr. Chauncey goes all day and always stops for a lunch break, and he probably would skip this lunch break if I let him. In case you're wondering, still wondering about how truly dedicated he is, he has been employed with Johnson City Schools for 22 years, and to this day, he has never taken a sick day. To this day, has never taken a sick day. Missed in 22 years. That's correct. I even checked the records, the mentor. Because I've not been principal ever 22 years. He is truly, truly dedicated to our school and our students. And Mr. Chauncey is one of the many, many people that make Mountain View great. If I had time, I would give you about 500 of the reasons why Mountain View is a great place to be. We love Mountain View. We're also excited about welcoming back Pre-K, so thank you again for that. A special thanks to our parents, families, teachers, and staff that are either here tonight. We have a few in the room or that are tuning in. And also, don't forget to take a look at the artwork in the back. Mountain View presents Starks this year. And we are thankful for the talent of our art teacher and Teacher of the Year Joanna Barnett and our amazing students. Thank you for the opportunity to be a part of Johnson City Schools and to lead Mountain View. I appreciate all the ways that you support our teachers, students, and staff. Thank you. Thank you.
Please take a minute to take a look at the beautiful artwork from our Mountain View students in the back of the room as well. They've done a great job. Okay, next up, we got recognitions.
Thank you. It, we're very honored to have a very special recognition tonight of one of our administrators, and I'm going to invite to the podium Joe Crabtree, President of the Johnson City Education Association.
Thank you for the opportunity tonight. So each year, the Tennessee Education Association allows us to recognize exceptional educators, administrators, teachers, support professionals who go above and beyond in their line of duty. And this past year, the members of the JCEA elected to nominate one of our own administrators here in Johnson City. And I'm happy to say that this individual, this administrator, has been selected as TTA's Distinguished Administrator Award recipient. And that award, excuse me, that award recipient is Carol McGill from Fairmont Elementary School.
Here we go, one, two, three, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, my family and my Fairmont family.
So I want to give a minute just to talk about Carol McGill, what we don't already know. I've known Carol since my days of student teaching. It won't be too long ago that was, at the old Fairmonts. And I had heard stories about Ms. McGill, and I was terrified going in the first day. My first day there, my student, my mentor teacher, me, Morgan Stern, who sadly is no longer in Johnson City, but a wonderful educator, sent me to the principal's office first thing. So the first thing you need to do is meet Ms. McGill. That doesn't help a student teacher at all. It terrified me to death. What I learned very quickly was that Carol is the kind of administrator that everybody wants, and everybody deserves to have an administrator like Carol. I did learn very early on that she was scared of elementary, or scared of kindergartners. I think she's since gotten over that, but that's when I was first told that first day that she was scared of kindergarten class. But as I've known Carol over the past number of years now, what I have seen from her is she has this unconditional love of education and wants to share it with everyone, share it with the world. She has a love of reading like nobody I've ever seen, and wants every student to learn how to read, every student to enjoy reading. And being a teacher who was at India Trail, I quickly knew when students came from Fairmonts. They were the ones that were always carrying books around going, when's the 20 minutes we got to read? It was every day. But also know that she has this unending support for and from her staff. They are loyal beyond measure, and it's easy to see why, because Carol is one who will back them at a moment's notice. She is there to support in any way they need, and from what I hear, she makes some really good cake, too. So when we were looking at who to choose, it was very easy for us to pick Carol. She's had a very distinguished career, and she's probably the one that we all know the most in the community. I know we all want to see her every day at Opening Day, just to see the comedy act. I love it. But Carol makes teaching fun. Carol makes her teachers want to be better and makes everyone want to be a better person. And so that's why we chose her, and should not be more proud of her for being selected.
And next, we need to adopt our agenda. Is there a motion?
Salute.
Give a second. All in favor, please say yes. Yes, may I approach? All right, now we've come to our Correspondence Delegations and Communications. This is the time when the public can address us. We have a number of people who have signed up to address us tonight. Those speaking will have two minutes to address us. Mrs. Hall will be keeping time. She'll raise her hand when you have 30 seconds left in your time. As you address us, we do have amplification up here, so please keep your masks on, and again, confine your comments to two minutes. So to begin with those who have signed up, we'll start off with Mr. Dwayne King. Mr. King, if you'll come up to the podium, give us your name and your address.
She had told me five minutes, so I'm going to talk really fast. My name's Dwayne King. I live here in Johnson City, 4000 Bradford Lane. I want to thank Sheriff McLeod, the board, Steve for giving me the time to talk to you. I think many of you know that my son has gone all the way through the public education system here in Johnson City. I think also many of you know that I was with the PTA. I served on both the Liberty Vale and Science Hill PTA Board. I served two years on the Johnson City Council with PTAs as legislative liaison. I made several trips to Nashville fact-finding on the property tax issue between Washington County and Johnson City, and what I believe is future funding issues for our Johnson City schools. What you probably don't know about me is I'm a disabled American veteran. In my four years of military service, I had several Agent Orange exposures. Here's the interesting thing, I was in the Coast Guard. I never left the States. Things aren't always what we're told they are. And you probably don't know that I've spent the last 24 years intimately involved in the development, testing, and implementation of indoor air quality technologies. Since 1997, as Project Air Coordinator, I've worked with the leading companies in the industry, setting up and testing their latest technologies in a variety of problem indoor environments and documenting the results. State of Tennessee, Henry College, Bluff City Council, and many others. Because of that involvement, I've become one of the most knowledgeable individuals I know in the field of indoor air quality and the associated problems with air in sealed indoor environments. And the only person in the room that may be more knowledgeable than myself is the man standing, sitting back here, Mr. Alan Johnston. He's the CEO, founder of Green Tech Environmental, and the reason I'm here tonight. Green Tech is a major developer of indoor air quality equipment. I believe my 24 years of experience more than qualifies me to tell you that there is a solution to the pandemic pandemonium that's going on in classrooms across this nation. I can say categorically, you do not have a coronavirus problem in your classrooms. What you do have in all of your classrooms is an indoor air quality problem.
Mr. King, we reached two minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I'm going to wrap this up. The reason I'm here, we want to work with you to build a model, a model of clean, fresh, pathogen, and pollution-free classrooms of the future. I can't do that obviously in two minutes or five minutes. My purpose tonight is hopefully create interest on you to join us in a field trial study. You have the data that we need for tracking improvement, and we have the technology to create that improvement.
Mr. King.
Whatever objections you have, we can probably overcome. I did bring a package of information I can get to each of you after the, after it's over.
We'll be glad to take your information. I suggest you talk to that gentleman right there sitting next to you. He's over at Facilities for the City, so.
Great. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next up is Joe Crabtree.
Dr. Barnett, I'm Sheriff McLeod, members of the board. Let me start with this, always start with the good news. Happy to report that today was a great day at Liberty Vale, as all students came back to school in a five-day-a-week schedule. And I can tell you coming from me as the teacher, it was good to see the hallways in the classrooms full of kids. Couldn't be happier about it. With that being said, though, there is still a great amount of fear and concern going on about the health and safety of our students, faculty, and families. While the number of COVID cases in schools may seem to be low in numbers, that can be accredited to the preventative measures and protocols put into place within our schools. We've all been wearing the mask diligently, social distancing as much as possible, cleaning surfaces at every chance we get, and stressing the need for our students and our faculty to wash and sanitize their hands on a regular basis. Even with these measures in place, we are still seeing students, families, and faculty members contracting COVID or COVID-related illness. Threat is alive and well within our school system. Now with all of our students coming back on a full-time basis, we know it's only a matter of time before the number of COVID cases increase across the system. What we fear will happen is exactly what we are seeing in other school systems. Individual schools and systems are having to close down because of the number of COVID cases or the lack of personnel in their schools. As the educators and support professionals in Johnson City, we want nothing more than to be in our classrooms with our students. And I'll be honest, we hate wearing the mask every day. I'll be honest with that, hate wearing it. We don't like having to social distance every day with our students, and it tears us apart that we can't hug our students like we normally have hugged our students before. With that being said, though, we know that these steps are what are in place and what it takes to help our students be safe as possible. And we are absolutely willing to do every single one of them every day because it's making a difference. So I ask you to please continue to maintain the safety protocols within our schools so we can carry on. We look forward to the days that these measures no longer need them, but until that day, we remain steadfast in our mission to keep our students and our faculty safe.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Next up is Ladon Hudgens. Please give us your name and two minutes of comments. I'm sorry, your address.
My name is Ladon Hudgens. I live at 180 Witherspoon Drive in Kingsport, Tennessee, and I'm very proud and excited to be a part of the Johnson City School family. So I want to thank the board members and Dr. Barnett. My story is the fact that I am a school speech-language pathologist, and I love what one of my colleagues called me, and to say that I work with littles. And the bulk of my caseload is three, four, and five-year-olds, which I love, and I want to say that I am very pleased, believe it or not, that a lot of these littles are doing a great job with wearing their masks. But there are some, because of what I do, whether they have sensory problems or health problems, they cannot wear their mask. So what does that mean? That means they're going to come to their speech therapy, and littles are going to hug, and littles are going to sit on my lap, as they've been doing. But I wanted to stress again, just as Joe Crabtree said, I'm very pleased that I wear my mask, I wear my shield, and I do all of my precautionary measures to keep not only me safe, but to keep them safe as well. Now I know studies are saying, and the data's out there, that, you know, that kids don't, aren't necessary carriers, but I'm here to say that all I want to do is to keep these protocols in place. Because, and I'm not here to gloss over anything, but yeah, I'm in that high-risk category because of my age and because I have some underlying conditions, but I'm asking you to please do whatever it takes to keep these protocols in place, to keep those of us safe that are in that category, but also to help those students that, for whatever reason, they cannot wear their mask, or that they're doing everything else, sanitizing, washing their hands. So I'm here just to say, representing those littles that are doing a great job wearing their masks, please keep these protocols in place. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Danielle Goodrich.
Hi, everybody. I'm Danielle Goodrich, 342 East Oak Drive. So I had planned on discussing how I've been asking for proof that masks work, and were sent back that pediatric cases were rising, which actually points to the opposite, and the science also points to it. I asked for science, and you sent two opinion pieces devoid of citations or studies, and I sent you upwards of 50 cited from the top medical journals. And the CDC is reporting that 70% that are infected reported wearing masks always, while 3% reported never. If masks worked, those numbers would be flipped. And then I realized Joe would be talking, and I don't know Joe, but I knew Joe was going to talk about how we needed to continue masks and distance to protect the teachers, the kids. Well, we are seven months into this, and the numbers are in. 99% experiences mildly, 94% of deaths had multiple comorbidities, 99.97% survival rate, a .03% fatality rate, not the 3% we were initially told. All of this shows that this isn't warranted or necessary, and the rising pediatric cases show it's doing more harm than good. The other thing the fearful will say that is wrong is that my health depends on his and his depends on mine, but that is incorrect. If a person takes care of themselves, exercises, stays away from fast food, gets plenty of sunshine, boosts their immune system, they won't encounter this virus with no problem. If they don't take care of their own health, then a mask won't help them, and it didn't the 70% in the CDC data. Because our healthcare system subscribes to a failing philosophy, germ theory, Prune Beak can kill the germ in a petri dish, and voila, you are well. Except, it doesn't work like that. If you aren't healthy, you will fall to the next pathogen that comes along, and you are made of trillions of viruses called a microbiome. You are a living, walking germ. Turin theory is the theory that if you take care of yourself, you will be healthy. Public healthcare doesn't subscribe to Turin theory. They subscribe to germ theory. The best philosophy doesn't always win. Sometimes the one with the best marketing does, just like with Tesla and Edison and current theory. Germ theory is lucrative. It leads to a lot of medicine and once eyes fits on mandates that make investors and shareholders rich, but doesn't make the public healthy. So again, if we want a healthy school, it won't be from masking, isolation, over sanitation, or chemical medicine. It'll be from an environment that promotes healthy eating, living, exercising. It'll be from taking, everyone taking control of their health.
You have two minutes.
Not depending on their neighbor to do it for them as they smoke cigarettes and eat a Big Mac and think a mask is the answer. Not only is Turin theory in taking responsibility for yourself the best health philosophy, it's also the freest one, the most American one. Thank you.
Denise Sibley's next on the list.
Sorry, I want to smile at you all. I'm Dr. Denise Sibley. I live at 3509 Wildwood Circle. I've been an internal medicine physician for 34 years, 31 of those in this town. We are now seven months into the COVID illness. We have data, and I want to do, like Ms. McGill, I have a love of educating, I have a love of preserving life, given my whole life to it. And I want to, I'm going to show you some simple numbers that, just some simple numbers here. These are COVID death rates for Tennessee. The source is from the 10th of October, the Tennessee Department of Health. In the age groups that we represent here, the 0 to 10, 11 to 20-year-olds, the rate of death is so small that they calculated that as 0% on the Tennessee Department of Health. That's 0.00005%. So I want you just to, these are a lot of numbers, but look at how small, even for our teachers who are in the up to 70-year age range, very small numbers of rates of death for the population of Tennessee. And I might add that for the 0 to 10 age group, there's actually the same death rate of a lightning strike in the United States. That's how small the rate of death is. And the reason I'm concentrating on the rate of death is because that tells you the true nature of this virus. The cases are not a good measure. There are many, many problems with that which we won't go into. I want to also notice, so these are small numbers. This is a bigger number. All-cause death rate for all ages in Tennessee is 1%, and that's from 2018, the Department of Health in Tennessee. The seasonal flu death rate is 0.1%, and that's CDC and the WHO which have said that. So these are very small numbers, these are bigger numbers, and I wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Next up is Kimberly Ting.
Hi, my name is Kim Ting. I live at 101 Rebecca's Lane. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm a concerned parent and have four children in Johnson City Schools. The mandates that were initially enforced due to COVID have gone on far too long. Although I believe it's still important to protect those most vulnerable within our community, I do not believe that represents the majority of our population, especially our children. We are putting way too much faith in human physicians, and now it's time to put our faith in the one great physician. His name is Jesus, and never did he tell his disciples or his followers to social distance, be afraid of sick people, or wear a mask. We live in a free country where we can practice our faith and pass it on to our children. We live in a free country where we can practice our faith and pass it on to our children. These mandates and guidelines are infringing on religious freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Mark Donovan. I'm a pediatrician in practice for 33 years. Treated lots of coronavirus, probably hundreds of thousands, although this is a completely different type of coronavirus. This coronavirus has a death rate, fatality rate of less than 1% as opposed to the SARS virus, which has 14%, the MERS, which had 30%, smallpox, 30% also, and Ebola, which had 15% fatality. Kids get this virus about 1,000 times less than adults. You just don't see that much in the pediatric medical news that I subscribe to. As far as the masks go, this coronavirus is very, very small. The masks are porous down to .3 microns. This virus can be .07 to .18. It can penetrate even the best of masks. Now, we are, our human body is composed of 10 trillion cells, 9 trillion of which don't belong to us. They are the microorganisms, bacteria and viruses that live on it, on us. And they also keep our immune system very active. So we're meant to be exposed to viruses. We are not meant to be wiping down everything, keeping everything sterile. There are numerous medical studies that when you do that, the kids actually have more health problems. It's also very, very distracting wearing a mask for the kids. And right now, I understand about grandparents, but you know, your job right now, and what you're looking at is the education of the kids. So I would just advocate that there be a no-mask policy, let kid be kid, in Brown. Thank you.
Next on the list is Jennifer Miller.
Hello. Can you hear me? My name is Jennifer Miller. I live at, on Luke McCahey Road in Ponty Blak, but I practice as a licensed professional therapist at Northridge Center in Johnson City. I don't have a lot of numbers for you. All I have is what I see. What I'm concerned about is really two things with children. I feel like the children from the lower socioeconomic areas and those who may have parents who struggle with substances or alcohol, school was their safe place, and they don't have that now. And I just wonder what that lack of opportunity and lack of support is going to do to those children. I, what if that teacher is their safe person, the only support person that they had? And I do know children like that. I know teachers who worry about their children in their classes. They were worried before this started about kids that were, you know, displaced from their home, moving in and out of foster care. Those children don't have the supportive parents that are going to make sure they do their virtual lessons and all that. It's hard enough for a very functional person, let alone someone that's struggling. That's the first thing. The second thing is the fear that's being instilled in all of our children. They are being taught to fear each other. They're being taught that their peers carry disease. They're not supposed to touch anyone. They're not supposed to hug anyone. They have to cover their face. All of you teachers have to be aware of the ACEs study, right? The ACEs study? I guarantee you, COVID-19 is going to find its way to that ACEs study. This thing is going to be felt for years. Children don't need fear. They need hope, they need reassurance, they need social interaction, they need to take the mask off and go to school, and that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to y'all. I live at 101 Arvin Meadows Drive in Johnson City, and I'm a very concerned parent. As she said, the mental health of them is very important, but what I want to speak on is your authority, like where are you getting your authority from? And what we have been told by some of you is that's from Mayor Grandy. Well, Mayor Grandy says that, no, he's gave that to y'all. So you're kind of passing the buck, so I have questions about that. If you are getting it from Mayor Grandy and his mandate, if that's what you're going by, that it's a county mandate, have you read over the mandate? The mandate does say that face coverings in schools and higher education, local education agency schools and institutions of higher education are strongly encouraged to implement a policy requiring the use of face coverings by students and staff with appropriate exemptions and consistent with any policies issued by the Tennessee Department of Education. So there are exemptions. There should be medical exemptions as well as religious exemptions for masks. You don't know what a person, if they have asthma, or whatever medical condition that a child may have, that they, whether it may be anxiety, you don't know what they have, that they can't wear a mask, and they should not be hindered for coming to school to do that, especially when you have these social distancing measures in place throughout the school. And with that, and then it does say, in that mandate, is further ordered that this order does not apply to, number two, any person who is under age 12, okay? So any person under age 12, that order does not apply to. Any person who cannot safely wear a face covering because of trouble breathing, due to underlying health condition, or another bona fide medical or health-related reason for not wearing face covering. And I don't know how many, you know, we were mandated to wear masks in here. You don't know what my health condition is for anybody. We refuse the exemptions for that.
Ms. Ching Kiu Kaoza.
And really, that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you. Jody Jones.
Chairman, board, thank you so much for your service to Johnson City School community and for the opportunity to speak. I'm Jody Jones, and I live at 315 West Locust Street, where my husband and I are the co-operators of the Jones Academy of Remote Learning, like a subsidiary of the Johnson City Schools. Right now, we have two enrollees, a 10th grader and a 7th grader. I came to make two points. First, as a mom, a huge shout out to the teachers that we have, especially the remote-only group for 7th grade, Team Pink. They are organized, professional, and flexible. They work so much overtime. They have persisted in the face of 1,000 obstacles, and they care so much about our kids. But coming to my second point, we'd really like to close our academy and send our kids back to school. And we want to be back in school, not just because our boys love school and miss their friends, and not just because remote learning is really hard. We want to be back because we believe in public school, in particular, its mission to teach the skills of civic life. When our kids attend school, we know they are subject to decisions and policies made for the good of the whole community. Sometimes those decisions are not good for our kids and make them uncomfortable or unhappy, unhappy. As an elected official, I know those are some of the best kinds of lessons about civic life. We take care of our community. Finally, as a pediatric psychologist, a healthcare provider, and an editor of a health science journal, we trust school leadership to lean on research when making these decisions. We trust you to vet the science when deciding about our kids' pedagogy, instructional design, disciplinary practices, or even the food served at lunch. Now we are trusting you again to use the same process to make decisions about the health of our community during a pandemic. I have been impressed by the safety protocols you've put in place in cooperation with our regional health experts. It seems you have effectively applied the same tried-and-true process, research-based decisions for the good of all. And just this week, we've seen quite a few amazing review articles summarizing strong literature in the area of masking in particular.
Exemption for...
The Jones Academy is getting by, but I know I speak for my boys, all of their classmates and teachers, in that we are anxious to see these protocols get to work so we can all get back to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ivy Click.
Hello, my name is Ivy Click, and I live at 4 Sweetwood Drive in Johnson City. I have two sons, and in the Johnson City School System, Riley's a 5th grader at Indian Trail, Eli is in kindergarten at Lake Ridge. I'm here today to express my appreciation for COVID-19 safety protocols that the school board has put in place to allow my children to return to in-person learning and to discuss the efficacy of face coverings. In addition to being a mom, I'm also the assistant dean of curriculum at the Pullman College of Medicine at ETSU. So my students are a little older than the students that you're most concerned about, but I can relate to some of the decisions that this board has had to make. In the spring, our faculty had to quickly transition courses to be taught completely online. Today, our first and second year medical students, our courses are still being conducted online. For the few instances where students must be in person, we have instituted many of the protocols that you have also implemented, including physical distancing and required face coverings. We require face coverings at ETSU and the College of Medicine because the CDC, the Tennessee Department of Health, and other national and global health organizations recommend that people wear masks in public settings as one way to control the spread of COVID-19. To be clear, science supports using masks. The Lancet found that face masks reduce the study, the chances of infection by more than 80%. A recent study published in August in Nature Communications found that even proof cloth masks could significantly reduce the number of infections and ultimately deaths. I'm sure most of you have been following coronavirus cases locally. Our numbers spiked in July and early August, but thankfully started trending downward. Unfortunately, we're beginning to see a rise in local case counts again. Over the last seven days, Washington County had an average of 35 new cases per day. In the previous week, the seven-day average was 25 cases per day. That's the wrong direction. I just checked the data just before I came to this meeting, and we added 52 new cases today in Washington County. Eight of them were in kids 5 to 18. Now is not the time to relax our mitigation efforts, not when our numbers are beginning to rise again. Deciding to send my children back to in-person school or remain in remote learning was one of the most difficult decisions I've ever had to make as a parent. Because I'm a researcher and I've been following the data closely, I knew the risk of spread that...
Ms. Click, I'm sorry, you've come to speak in reference.
I just want to finally say that one of the reasons that I decided to send my students back, my kids back to school, was because of the safety protocols that you put in place. I was thrilled that you chose to require face masks for everyone. I was worried about my Eli, about my six-year-old's ability to wear a mask all day, but I should have known to give our kids more credit.
Ms. Click, I'm sorry.
If you were to show up at school without a mask, he'll be the first person to ask you where it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Jody Jones.
Hello, Dr. Barnett and school board members. My name is Dr. Paige Gilbert-Greene, and I live at 36 Century Court in Johnson City. My daughter is in kindergarten at Town Acres Elementary. She loves her school, and we feel very blessed to be part of the Town Acres community. Thus far, I have been very proud of how the Johnson City School System has handled the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm an associate professor in the ETSU College of Medicine in the Department of Family Medicine and the co-director of Rural Programs Equilinen. As an academic physician, I maintain a clinical practice, see patients in the inpatient and outpatient setting, as well as teach resident physicians and medical students. As such, a significant part of my job is awareness and appraisal of current literature and the practice of evidence-based medicine. As you know, that has been difficult in the era of the COVID-19 pandemic. As the science community works at unheard-of paces to produce quality research, current recommendations are scant and change rapidly. One thing we do know is that we currently have little in the way of protection against COVID-19 outside of mitigation measures such as mask-wearing and distancing. Now, let's take a moment and talk about our children. According to data compiled by the American Academy of Pediatrics released in October, over 650,000 children have been affected by COVID-19. There were over 70,000 new pediatric cases between September 7th and October 1st, a 13% rise in COVID-19 cases over the last two weeks. I don't believe that's related to wearing masks in school. I actually believe that's related to not wearing them outside of school and in other public places. The state of Tennessee has the fourth-highest number of cumulative COVID-19 cases in children in our nation. Although serious complications and death from the COVID-19 pandemic is rare in the pediatric population, death has occurred. There have been several documented cases of multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, even locally, which is associated with COVID-19 and can be serious. Even in addition, even though children are not as severely affected by COVID-19 as adults, they can be carriers. The loss of any human life, whether pediatric or adult, is one too many for me. My husband Brandon is also a physician and is the chief of Pediatric Orthopedics at Mass Longford Children's Hospital. The decision to send our daughter to school in person this year was one of the most difficult ones we've ever had to make.
Dr. Green, I'm sorry, you've come to speak in reference. If you could please wrap up.
Yes, I sure will. What was clear from the available data, including the recommendations from the CDC and other health organizations, was that the use of masks and mitigation measures to prevent the spread of COVID-19 is obvious. We also believe, as is endorsed by the American Academy of Pediatrics, that children have improved outcomes when they receive in-person learning. When our schools released an in-person learning plan, which directed the use of masks as well as physical distancing, we were very pleased and proud. I urge you to continue these measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, that's the end of our list. The folks who have signed up to address the board, or the others who would like to address the board. If you'd come up to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Leah Bolton. I live at 5426 Kenova Court in Kingsport. We have a business here in Johnson City. Tennessee, Tennessee...
If you would, please, could you please pull your mask up?
Tennessee Code Title 39, Chronal Offensive 39-13-102. For purpose of strangulation means intentionally or knowingly impeding normal breathing or circulation of the blood by applying pressure to the throat or neck, or by blocking the nose and mouth of another person, regardless of whether that conduct results in any visible or injury, or whether the person has any intent to kill or protractively injure the victim. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Debbie Deisher, and I live at 700 North Rum Street here in Johnson City. Been a nurse for over 37 years, and I have worked pediatrics in the past. I work adult now. And I actually went to New York during this pandemic, and the fact that we're still calling it a pandemic surprises me a little bit, but I'm very passionate about this because I feel like we are treating healthy people the same as we are sick people. Kids get viruses, they spread them around, and I understand, yes, one death is one death too many. However, we're all guaranteed to die sometime. I think we have overreached our use of the mandates, and I think that we need to stop them. We need to let kids be kids. We can use other things. You've guys got partitioners. Why can't the teachers stand behind the plexi class? The kids can sit at their desk with no mask on, their desks are 60 apart. I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with kids wearing masks that have asthma, they go outside, people don't tell them to take them off, they run, they play, they fall down because they're out of breath from wearing a mask and running. The mask gets soiled, they carry bacteria in them. We're going to be having some other problems from some of the mandates that we have in place right now. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the communications. Moving on with our agenda, move to reports from the different tenants that... Moving on with our agenda, move to reports from the different tenants that.
First report we have tonight is Building Projects Update with Mr. Randy Trudel. Thank you for being here.
Thank you guys for having me on the agenda to give you an update. Do you, do you want this back?
Randy, they're here for you.
The building projects is her favorite part.
As a matter of fact, I'm gonna say I've got a face for radio. That's right, I've got a, I'm covering up those stuff. Well, as you all know, there's a lot going on in the building world for Johnson City schools. So, as we go through some of this throughout this year and going into next year, my reports may get a little more longer, just based on all the different components of everything that's happening, but I'll try to give you the highlights so that you understand where we're at. That way, you'll, you'll have a good understanding of what position we're at with these projects. Uh, the first one I have is Indian Trail Intermediate School. That project bid out October the first. And what that is, basically, the scope of work on that was to build about a fifty-six-hundred square foot addition onto the rear of the, of the school for storage. It's a very nice storage, you know, when we use the word storage, that's not really describing what this is going to be. It's, it's for orchestra, it's for phys ed, it's general storage, it's a very nice storage facility to be put on the back of the school. And then also to convert sixteen existing classrooms into science labs. Uh, and then also, it incorporates security for the foyer, turning some doors around, doing the security upgrades for Indian Trail that we've been talking about for the past year. So, all that's incorporated into the scope of work. Uh, when the bids were open, Preston Construction Company was the low bidder, and with the construction bid, it came in at one million three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, that's on the city commission agenda for this coming Thursday night for their approval. Uh, once, if they approve that contract, then we're hoping to issue a notice to proceed on October the twenty-sixth, and then get started working in there in November, December timeframe on that project.
How that compares to our budget?
Uh, we had budgeted at one point four million. So, we're a little under budget. When you start adding in the architectural fees, um, and all the other contingency monies, it comes in at about one million four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, so we're right on budget for that.
And that includes everything, the science classrooms, the addition to the storage, the whole, the whole thing?
It includes the whole scope of work, and, and we actually had to change some, um, some work on the back for retention, adding retention pond to do, take care of a stormwater before it goes off into that other one, so that we don't create any other issues on the existing side. Um, so, we, we tried to encompass everything that we really needed to address in this, uh, in this scope of work, and, and I feel like we've covered everything that we were talking about for that, to make that property comparable to Liberty Bell. Okay? Uh, the next project I had on my list was the roofing projects for Cherokee Elementary and Topper Academy. Those have been completed. Um, we're getting ready to do our final inspection so we can release the paintage, but those projects are done, and it turned out they were completed in a very good manner with both projects being done without any interruption to school or any problems. Uh, additions and alterations to the three elementary schools. Uh, South Side Elementary School is under construction now, as you can see if you drive by. Uh, they've got most of the exterior and interior block walls laid and are working on the structural steel and the metal decking, which they completed so that they can try to get it dried in. Um, so that, because we're actually working on a second story, uh, there's a finished first story underneath that, so as construction's going on with these rains and, and the way the hurricane is bringing moisture into our area, it's imperative that we get that covered as quick as we can because naturally, water's going down through and doing some, some havoc on the first floor, but we will get all that corrected as the project continues to go on, to work with that. So, Katie will be happy.
Thank you.
Also, that project, I wanted to emphasize on that project as well, includes a four-year security upgrade, so that there'll be a new window placed in the foyer there, uh, that will be assessed, accessed by someone working in the school, so that when someone comes to check in, they'll have a walk-up window that they can talk to someone before they can actually access the rest of the school, uh, so it will prevent them, just strangers, from walking in and getting into the school. So, those security upgrades for that foyer are incorporated into that project as well, along with some upgrades to the playground for ADA accessibility, so we're taking care of that as well. Uh, Woodland Elementary School, the plans have been approved by the State Fire Marshal's Office. Uh, the plans are in process of being reviewed. I saw a comment list come back from the City Building Department, uh, some things they wanted added to the drawings or corrected. Uh, once we get that process in, uh, I hope to really get that through purchasing and get that out to bid sometime toward the end of this month. The bids will be due back maybe toward the end of November. Um, and then, once we evaluate those bids at Woodland, uh, hopefully, we can get everything through commission approval and get a notice to proceed January or February. That's what my goal is. And that's about a sixteen-to-eighteen-month project to complete, uh, because it includes a complete overhaul upgrade of the HVAC system in the entire school. It also includes a major foyer security upgrade. We're going to have to add doors, change out glass, put in a walk-up window and everything. Just what, what these foyer security upgrades that we're doing for all the schools as we're progressing through this, is that someone comes into the foyer, that's where they're locked in, they can't get into the rest of the school without being allowed that access. So, uh, Woodland, some of these schools, just the basis of their design and the way they're built, uh, creates some, uh, some challenges, but we're addressing all those through architects and then getting it approved through the State Fire Marshal's Office so that we're in compliance with the law, state law.
Randy, is it true to say the larger foriors are the ones that would have caught the way?
Those are the ones that are creating, well, and they're not a problem, they just create a lot more cost associated with the project in order to add doors at the end of corridors to kind of segregate off the foyer from the rest of the school. Uh, Lake Ridge Elementary School, the architect is working on completing those plans. He's a little bit farther behind with South Side and Woodland, where they are, he's had some other, he's the same architect that was doing Indian Trail, so he was focusing on that one and then, but I talked to him this morning. Um, we've scheduled a meeting, uh, this week to sit down and kind of discuss some questions that they've had while they're working on the schematic design and the drawings for Lake Ridge. Uh, so, I look for those to start picking up some speed and getting those completed by the end of the year. Uh, and then, we can go through the process of fire marshal approval and, uh, city approval and get those out to bid the first of the year. That's a shorter project window time. Uh, that project's probably about twelve months, uh, so we'll have plenty of time to be ready by fall of twenty-twenty-two, if everything continues to go the way it is. Um, Liberty Bell Middle School Cafeteria and Gymnasium. Today was the first day kids were able to utilize that facility, so. We were all very, very happy with that. Uh, it's been a long time coming. Uh, we're still working on some things that have unforeseen that cropped up at the last minute. Um, I, I went on vacation week before last for a week, and so I'm getting all these emails and pictures of a dropout at the back of the school that created a huge headache for me when I got back last week. Um, so, but they've worked it through very well. Uh, by this coming Friday, we'll never even know it was there. Uh, they've gotten everything fixed back and repaired, and so now they're just going back to putting in the sidewalks and the paving in the back parking lot. Um, and it, and it was fixed, uh, in accordance with the soils engineer who went out and kept exploring it and making sure we did the right thing, so I feel very comfortable with this. This is the fourth one that we hit during this construction, uh, and it was by far the biggest one, uh, the most problematic, uh, but, but we were able to overcome it. So, contractor tells me by this Friday, uh, we should have everything squared away with that. Um, we developed a very lengthy punch list, uh, by the end of September, contractors went through and completed all that punch list, and everything's been done. We're meeting tomorrow at ten o'clock to just review all those things that we completed since we met October the sixth, uh, just to verify all that, but substantial completion and a certificate of occupancies have all been issued, so it's very, it's very good that the students were able to come back from fall break and utilize that facility.
So, real quick, so the issue that you were talking about, um, knocked out our internet for a while at Liberty Bell?
It did.
And?
Electric.
Electric.
Water.
So, I know that some people were, we're talking about connectivity problems during fall break, and I think that was probably.
Yeah. What happened was, in that hole that dropped out, it was seventeen foot deep. I didn't know if you guys wanted that much detail, but it was seventeen foot deep before we found the throat, and that's where the dropout's going in. And at that seventeen-foot level, there was a storm drain that had collapsed where it fell out underneath it. So, all the storm drain that runs to the retention pond on the other side of the campus had collapsed at the bottom of that. And then, when you come up about another three foot, there was a sewer line that went through there, and then about two foot above that was a major water line that fed all the water to the kitchen at, at the new cafeteria, and it was hanging in midair. And then, across that, perpendicular to that, was a communications chase that had four conduit encased in concrete, and it was bowed like it was getting ready to break, so we had to get Bright Ridge, um, and CenturyLink and everyone up there to disconnect all the internet. It had fiber, it had phones, it had everything. We had to disconnect it all, take that concrete chase out, fix the hole, and then put it all back in. So, they were there till.
They worked on that.
There was a lot of work. They were there till eleven o'clock Saturday night, CenturyLink was getting all their stuff put back in. Uh, BST was there very, very late, getting all the fiber and everything hooked back up. But as of this morning, uh, everything should be connected back up except for the internet to Freedom Hall, and so, if they're not open, so they can live without it till this evening or morning.
They have the classes in Freedom Hall.
They don't have any classes, that's right. But by the end of the week, all that'll be corrected too. So, it's been a big issue, and thankfully, we had contingency money, uh, in the budget to kind of cover these costs for unforeseen problems. Yes, sir?
Does the city approve the agreement with county?
You're trying to put me on the spot or something? No, I do not think they have, so I do not know.
Which means, for the record, Johnson City will not receive any money from the county until the Jonesboro School is completed. Is that correct?
It, it hasn't come on their agenda yet. It has not come up on their agenda. I think they're looking and exploring some other things, and, uh, I'm, I'm not very familiar with the contract or all of the things that's involved. Uh, that's, I leave that up to the city commission and the city manager for those type of decisions.
Are those boots government issued?
They, they are not. Those come out of my pocket. Now, I can answer those questions a lot better.
If you don't mind, tell Joe Barnes where you dropped your boots.
I'll sure, I'll pass that along to him. I'll pass that along. The last thing, moving on, segue into some more, but the last thing is, we did meet, based on a facilities committee meeting for the school, there was some discussion about enclosing Town Acres Courtyard just for, I mean, not temporary, but till there can be a new school bill, uh, for safety and security reasons, and it was asked of Dr. Barnett and Joe Barnes and myself to go visit the school to look at what we could come up with, some ideas of enclosing that courtyard. We did that last week, um, and, and really had a good, a good side visit and a good discussion about it. So, what I'm going to do now is kind of, uh, reach out to an architectural firm to get a cost and a proposal of what they will charge to, uh, design some, some walls on the outside to kind of enclose everything. Will not have to have a roof, it won't be like an enclosed foyer, but it'll, uh, it'll enclose all three of those buildings all the way around, so that there'll be doors that will be secured and locked from the outside and have emergency egress on the inside. Uh, and so, that's what we're looking at, probably have some windows or light, lights at the top side to protect, uh, but still allow light and, and everything to come through. Maybe even raise it off the ground a little bit on the outside wall just for mowing and taking care of it, and so, so it'll be more of a security wall, uh, that, that will be there, and then also have the architect address this foyer security for that school as well. Um, but with the understanding that we know that the hope is, uh, that there's a new school there in twenty-twenty-six or twenty-twenty-eight, depending on, you know, when the funding is available to design and build that. Uh, but this way, this'll go a long way to, for, and I, I'd like to give you an estimated cost. I don't know what that'll be till an architect can kind of give me some idea of what they're planning on putting in there. Dr. Barnett had a good idea of using, uh, metal panels that are similar at Town Acres already, uh, to go around the outside with some doors, so I, I really think that will be a very good option. Uh, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna solicit some architects and try to get one hired and get a, get a price for that, and come back to you with some more information for that.
Get the timeline on that?
So, hire an architect?
Or, yeah, get some ideas?
I, I really hope to be able to talk to somebody and get a proposal by the end of this month.
Good. So, would that cover the areas where they have the metal, the metal fencing between the each building?
Yes. It'll, it'll actually be where the fencing is at right now on the canopies, and we'll actually use, and what we thought about using is the posts that are supporting the canopies now, and just enclose where the fencing is at. And it's in three locations, over where the playground's at, on, playground on both sides, and then a short little section in between the two primary buildings.
Okay.
We talked about brick and mortar block at that one smaller section. Are you still thinking that? Depends on what the architect says.
It depends on what the architect says. He may come up with something that just blends in, but we thought that, that space was only like fifteen or sixteen feet, so we might, we thought we could put some flitters and, and do some in-house block and brick there, but then, when we got to the other side, they're a lot longer, so we may just incorporate whatever the architect says to do for all three locations.
You still have to be able to get a, uh, maintenance trucks, you still have to be able to get a dump truck, anything that may, all the, the electrical, the gas, all the utilities go into that courtyard where those three separate buildings were built.
Yeah.
To have, to have access to that.
There's a ton of obstacles in there, so. One section over there where we may do that, we may end up having to put panels in that can be removed, not easily, but by maintenance, so that if you had to drive a, a dump truck in there underneath the canopy, you could do that. So, I think every, every obstacle that we talked about while we were out there could be overcome, and, and to be honest with you, I, I think this would be something that we may could do for, you know, a hundred or a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and, and if you get six or eight years out of it, it's well worth that money. Any other questions? I told you it'd get a little more lengthy.
That's good, though, thanks.
Yeah, give you guys a lot of information. All right, thank you all.
I think I came in at the utility block. They'd gotten it up to that point by the time I.
Oh, had it?
Yeah, so the rest of that information for me was really, really good too.
Yeah, and, and it's fixed very well. We, and I will say this, there's seventy, seventy-two or seventy-three yards of flowcrete we put in there. That's a lot of concrete. Flowcrete's like a, a concrete that'll flow and span and hold up things, so I don't see that throat or that ever washing away.
Randy, have you ever seen the old Tom Hanks movie Money Pit?
How, how long did it run?
Yeah.
Two weeks.
That, that's what I was getting ready to say. That, that's been the pressure on me, is, you know, this was supposed to have been done like in June this past summer, and here we are in October. And I tease the architect, I mean, the contractor all the time. I'm like, he always tells me, Randy, we're gonna be done by June, and then now it's like, Randy, we're gonna be done by July. Well, now it's, Randy will be done by the end of October, so.
You know they can put a year.
I don't believe anything he says.
The students were in school, the teachers, that's right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thanks. Next is the financial report ending August thirty-one.
Revenues for the month of August totaled $6,086,000. Total revenues at the end of August were $8,458,000. Local auction sales tax collections through September are 2.67% above September twenty nineteen. Just roughly calculating and estimating where we're at now above on sales tax through September, estimate we're up about $215,000 from the budget. This will help offset the B E P projection to come under budget of $424,000. So sales tax can continue like this, I think it will cover that B E P deficit. But I think what you keep in mind, fall twenty nineteen is when you start seeing these increases because the online sales started, so we might start seeing not as high increase numbers coming in the next few months. Expenditures for August totaled $6,301,000, and total expenditures at the end of August was $9,162,000. Fund balance at the end of August was $7,604,000. The insurance fund at the end of August had a balance of about $75,000. At the end of September, we projected it was gonna be in the hole again, and we had to go ahead and transfer $425,000. So for the year, that makes $825,000 we transferred. We budgeted eight hundred thousand.
So that transfer before, before or after the end of balance of around seventy-five thousand?
After, this was at the end of September.
Okay.
Yeah. And seventy-five was the end of August. We did have a high claim that's come in.
Okay.
And we get quarterly rebates on our prescriptions. They run a month behind, so we'll get one this month. But I anticipate that we're gonna have to look at transferring additional funds from the general fund. Blue Cross is supposed to be working on an analysis for us. They usually do it annually in conjunction with the city. I asked them to go ahead and do one for this for us to see what's going on, and I've reached out to our consultant, Sharon Morgan, also look and see what else we need to throw numbers, what else can we look at to see what's causing this continued increase in expenditures. Because of our transfer that we did do at the end of September, and this time our cash flow tends to run low, we did ask on October first for the city, go ahead and do our transfer on the first instead of waiting till about the twentieth when they normally do it. And then as of today, our gap, cash balance is $3.2 million. Any questions on the financials?
So total, we had budgeted eight hundred two thousand, we transferred, so we did four hundred four and four twenty-five, which has actually gone over what we had budgeted already.
It'll take some time for the increased premiums to start accumulating in the plan, but just right now expenditures are just going higher than we can be.
So is there a reason that you didn't go eight twenty-five instead of eight hundred?
Because that's what I thought it was, not go the whole one.
All right.
Yeah, talking with, looking at what I had and what the city had, that's what we needed.
Seeing what was coming, okay.
Are there any questions for Leah? Just an action item or a motion?
Move to approve.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Next report from Leah Valley is the update on sales tax P E P.
The balance in the P E P account at the end of August was $3,562,000. Collections through August were 1.7% above the previous year, and dispersments for the month totaled $114,000.
We also have a budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. This is budget amendment number one.
This is the first budget amendment for twenty twenty-one, and this budget would only do increased appropriations for the year in reserves that weren't known, were close, were past the budget last year, and so we're adding him in this year. That's totaled $571,000 to bring our whole general fund budget to $79,333,000. We've also amended the grant funds to match what our grant allocations were awarded.
Move to approve?
Is there a second? Questions or discussions regarding the motion? Probably requires a roll call, but.
John Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Caffey Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Donkey Henning?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle, please?
Yes.
Ms. Paulary?
Yes.
Mr. Timoral?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leah.
Next report is updated, two thousand twenty, twenty-two board technology plan updated terms.
So this plan is exactly the one that we looked at at the board retreat, but we like to bring it to the board every fall for approval, just so we can continue to have our map as we move forward. And again, just for the benefit of everyone here, the big pieces on this, of course, that changed this year, and thanks to Leah and Dr. Anderson and Dr. Barnett, we've been able to use a lot of our CARES money to be able to move a lot of these projects forward that I know a lot of our teachers. A year ago, we didn't think about having the need to record or to do video production, and that has become a huge part of what we do in our school system now, so that's been something that we've added to our plan this year with Canvas Studio. And just today, our P O from our office went to E N A, so hopefully this week we'll be getting our official Zoom account set up. I had to go through city manager approval, so that's all going, so that should be coming, I'm hoping, this week or early next week. So video has become a really big part of what we're doing in our system, which we didn't even talk about video production a year ago. So obviously, moving forward, that will still be a piece of what we do. The biggest piece on here that is different from plans that we've had in the past, just so we have it out there sort of where we're going, and being proactive and not reactive. And we talked about this, I know at the board retreat, and not only us, but a lot of other districts spent a lot of the spring, the summer, trying to react to what was going on, but to sort of pivot now and be a little more proactive. This plan will actually allow us to move forward and formulate a permanent plan for a remote slash online virtual solution for Johnson City schools, not one where every principal in this room is trying to run both an in-person and a virtual program in their buildings, but this would move us toward next year. This year, we will formulate, bring the board a plan in the spring, and then implement next year a permanent solution for Johnson City schools that would offer our parents and our students who want that option, a permanent virtual option that is of high quality, and I will stand by the work that our teachers have done who have been full remote teachers or who have been doing remote from the classroom perhaps at Science Hill and put it up against any district in the state of Tennessee. Dr. Bentley, Dr. Anderson, and I've had a lot of chances to talk with other districts. We've presented what we've been doing with other districts, and I just want to thank the board for letting us go the way that we did with having full remote teachers and with being very selective in how we were able to do video from, from some of our classrooms. So this plan would actually put into motion, Melanie, Saret, and I already have a couple of districts that we would like to visit who are already down this road, to bring the board a plan in the spring. This plan also, in this year, is already funded. Once they arrive, we're waiting like everyone else in the world, devices for third and fourth grade, refreshment this year, so all of our third and fourth grade students this year will receive new Chromebooks. Teacher laptops have already arrived, and they are in the midst of being distributed. And then next year, this plan would set in motion, it will be time to renew our devices at Liberty Valley and Science Hill High School, which gives us on that rotation. This plan also keeps in place our teacher leader program, and we're in cohort five right now. We're revamping a lot of what we're doing with professional learning this year. Obviously, there are no conferences to go to. We're doing some virtual things, but we are able to bring an author and a speaker into the district in November. We'll make sure all of you are invited. It's a book that all the teacher leaders read last year, the administrators read it this year. He was available, and we're actually gonna be able to bring him in in person. I've worked with Dr. Wallace to make sure that we're gonna meet all of our protocols to have as many teachers come through during the day and into the evening as can to hear Wes Kiznik, who is the author of two books actually, Bold School, which a lot of us in this room have read, and Breaking Bold, which is his new book, which cohort five of our teacher leaders are, are studying. We continue to use our teacher leaders for professional development, and the Learning Center upstairs continues to offer a lot of PD related to technology as we move through the fall. And coming out of this and looking forward, I think this will set us up well for whatever the next chapter is. Five years ago, we didn't know where we would be, two years from then, and then last year, we didn't know where we would be now, and I stand here again just to thank you on behalf of the district for having the vision so many years ago and allowing us to have this ongoing rolling plan that hopefully keeps us out in a place where we can be planning for the best instructional solutions for our students and the best instructional strategies and tools for our teachers, so that we, when we have to be reactive, we're prepared to be reactive. And now that we're moving toward being proactive, this plan will put those supports in place.
Question, and this is maybe looking ahead a little bit much, but for the permanent remote learning, have we started thinking about, are we gonna offer this to county students, to other county students?
I would, I think when we bring that plan to the board, that would of course be at the board's discretion. I know in my mind right now, I spend ninety-nine point nine percent of my time thinking about our students within Johnson City schools. And I know Melanie and I talked just this afternoon, we've got a couple of districts that we're gonna be visiting, and we're gonna be anxious to see what their models are.
Right.
Yeah, we'll be interested to hear that.
Right.
Yeah, questions for Dr. Tims on this topic?
Thanks for all the great work that you guys have been doing this year, and the flexibility.
Sure, thanks. Next to Adam also is with Dr. Tims, it also has to do with technology. The remote and hybrid students, did you all receive a copy of that plan previously? And you recap what we're doing?
Absolutely. So, Science Hill, we've had a group sit down several times during the fall to evaluate again, trying to move from being reactive to being proactive, and I wish Dr. Carter were here tonight to thank him for all of his efforts at the high school with all the scheduling changes that he has done. I know Dr. Decker and Mr. Barnett are here. But we actually put together a catalog for the spring that we've already released, and we'll be releasing a survey in early November for our current remote students at Science Hill to indicate their preference for the spring, as well as be able to take a look at this catalog of courses. We tried as best as we could to offer as many classes at Science Hill to all of our students, regardless if they were in-person or remote, and I think that our number that we were able to satisfy first request was around eighty-four percent. And when you think of twenty-three hundred students that we were able to get with our in-person and our remote, eighty-three percent to, of their first choice classes, that was pretty powerful. However, that put a load on a lot of our teachers. I think at last count, it was more than sixty teachers were serving at least one or more. ROTC has carried a big load where they were trying to do live instruction from the classroom as well as have live instruction in the room as well as broadcasting to home. That has been a big lift for them, so we're really trying to be strategic in the spring with our offerings and with what we're offering in the spring. It's still a full array of classes. We're taking advantage of our own campus classes that our teachers have designed and taught for several years now. We actually have added an additional class to that catalog that we'll offer ongoing. That's AP U S History, that's now fully built out by Dr. Sayers, and it's offered through Science Hill in addition to everything else. We're gonna be using some of the Nice Wander classes, we'll be using some of our Ed mentum catalog, and we're also going to be offering a hybrid approach where students can be on remote for three periods but come in for a period of their tours to a class that is not offered in a full remote setting. That could be anything from AP Chemistry to one of their higher level C T E classes to band orchestra. So that would be our option for the spring at Science Hill High School.
Teachers really did an amazing job and continue to do an amazing job with remote and in-person, but we really are listening to them, the workflows and their, for them, especially special education teachers, C T E teachers, you name it.
Health science has carried a huge load.
So ROTC is, as Dr. Tims mentioned, so really being, you know, listening to them, including teachers and staff, administrative staff in that planning, feel like it's a really good plan for the spring. Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Tims.
Great work, thank you.
Next report, we have a review of safety protocols regarding COVID-19. Dr. Wallace, welcome. I think that might be your bottle of water.
Right here?
I think so. Good.
First of all, just let me say thank you, you know, just sitting here, listening throughout tonight, and I know the incredible responsibility that you have as board, that Dr. Barnett has as superintendent, constantly make positive decisions for all of our students, and I know that that's something that this board takes very, very seriously, so as an employee, I certainly appreciate that. I'd like to reiterate, one of the things that was said by one of the speakers that I thought was pretty important, and that is, you know, we've attacked this issue from a school perspective, the same way we attack every issue, and that is, we've looked at all the available information, whether it's been academic stuff, whether it's been safety protocol, we've always taken that approach in Johnson City. And I feel very confident that we've done the same thing with this process. There's a lot of information out there, there's information on both sides. We get that. But just like any safety protocol that I bring before you, whether it's our protocol to how we provide safety for our students in the building through mental health support, whether it's our safety protocol and how we assure that people are registered in our buildings through our Raptor program, or whether it's our safety protocol and how we've ensured that we've had positive protocols in place for COVID, I feel very confident that the information that we're bringing you is the best information that we have at the time. I also feel confident that our ego is not big enough, or not so big, that when we get new information, that we don't mind changing, and I think we've got a good record of that. In fact, if you'll recall, our initial plan was based on the, what I would now say, archaic method of the red, green, and yellow model. That was initially the best information that we had, where we talked about what is, what is community spread, what is considered community spread, and then what should not be our response to it. Well, as we've evolved and learned more information, got better models, we've used the White House coronavirus map that uses two factors, positivity rate in a community, and also a higher number per one hundred thousand, to kind of make our decisions on how we implement protocol, and then how we implement decisions on how we trace and how we, how that affects our in-person, in-person learning. One of the things that I think is really important to emphasize, and that is, we do not have a specific number. So a lot of times people ask us, well, what is our number? When we get to X, what does that mean for us? Does it mean if we're super low, we take these masks off, if we're super high, we're out of school? We use those two factors, that coronavirus task force, White House task force, in connection with the Tennessee Department of Health. We look at those two factors, and then we use that protocol on how to close schools or how we contact trace. or how we contact trace that you all have in front of us to make those decisions. Our goal is and always has been to have as many students in school as possible. So obviously, our teachers, I thank you, our teachers need to be thanked, husband of a teacher, son-in-law of a teacher. They work so incredibly hard to make this work. But we also know that the best possible avenue for our students is in-person. Our teachers want it, we want it, we just want to do it safely. And we try to balance that. So one of the things that's really important for you to know is that as we've come back after fall break at a hundred percent, there are some things that we're going to continue to do, mask wearing, some of the mitigation factors that has been advised to us by Tennessee Department of Health, CDC, Washington County Regional Health Department, social distancing as much as possible. So we need to be clear, it is impossible for us to do six foot of social distancing in our schools when we're at the capacity that we're at currently. So we don't want to give any misleading information. Some of our classes, it's Mr. Barnett, Ms. Flora, Dr. Jacobs would all mention to you that it's just impossible in some of our larger schools, even in some of our elementary schools. We do the best that we can. We've mentioned that very clearly in our protocol. So we, we want people to know that, we have masks available, we are mask-rich. If you all recall, in July, we couldn't get a mask. So many of our parents have stepped up, they provided their masks for their own children. We have masks sitting in buildings, we've got masks sitting at central offices, we should be good with masks for a long time. We provided barriers when asked for from our schools and from our teachers. We've looked at some smaller individual type things that some specific teachers have asked for, we've provided face shields. The governor's safety kits are coming in on a regular basis. So then we do have the hand sanitizer, which we had an abundance of, gloves, face shields, as I mentioned. So those are some of the things that we have. I also want to introduce to you, you've heard me talk about her, but Jennifer Norton is sitting back in the back. Jennifer is our... She really means a lot more than applause. So she's a ten-month employee, but right now she's working about fourteen months. She was on fall break last week. I know, in fact, that Jennifer takes calls to ten, eleven o'clock at night from her teachers and parents. She worked all last week on her own time to provide information and works very closely with Washington County Regional Health Department and contact tracing. So you have that information before you, how we go about this process. Jennifer's the expert on that, she's been through the training. We have a team of RNs at our school system that help support her in that, along with our LPNs and clinic nurses that provide that additional support at the school. One additional piece of information, sometimes you hear things like, why are they sending so many students home for a case that happened at the school? Well, obviously, we're going to follow guidelines, that's the most important thing. But secondly, not all of those are related to us. So just to give you an example, so far, we've had a total of twenty-nine positive faculty members and forty-nine positive students. We have quarantined a total of thirty-nine faculty and we've quarantined a total of three-hundred-and-thirty-one students. Of that number, of the quarantine numbers, fifteen of the faculty have been due to school-related issues. The vast majority of them have been things that have happened outside of the school that they've had to quarantine based on recommendations of the Regional Health Department. Of our students, a hundred and fifty-six have been from school exposure of the three-hundred-and-thirty-one. So a lot of times when people hear that number, they'll say, well, that seems like a lot. Again, we're always going to follow the protocol. However, not all of the things are directly related to in-school experiences. So you have that information in front of you, we have continued to follow that information. I speak frequently to Washington County Regional Health Department, we're on those calls every week. Jennifer speaks daily to Dr. Thomas, Dr. Kirsty, when we have any question at all, whether or not somebody fits that protocol. So with that, a little bit of a summary and update, I'll open it up for any questions you might ask of me, or Jennifer's certainly here to provide any answers about tracing if you have any questions.
I do have Jennifer on the agenda to talk about contact tracing if you may ask questions about...
Jennifer, do you want to come up and just give a little brief summary of...
Come on down.
To reiterate more of the things you talked about there, you know, we've got a school system that had to go remote in our region. We have a school, high school, that went remote. So we're trying to have school in-person and continue to be there and not have to close schools, not have to close schools, the school system. And that's, that's just, we really believe, and you think Dr. Wallace said that, but in-person instruction, we really truly believe in that and believe in our teachers to do the remote, and we believe that the in-person is the best way to go.
And we believe, we believe the biggest part of that is our mitigation factors, our mitigation factors. So how do we do, how do we keep as many people safe as possible? And yes, we probably do err on the cautious side, but we want to be able to keep as many students in school as possible. So Jennifer, I'll let you talk a little bit about tracing and then I'll sit down.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
So you do have our protocol in place that the Tennessee Department of Health has given us. And it is pretty much like Dr. Wallace talked about. Once we are made aware of a positive case that lives within our school, I work directly with the Tennessee Department of Health. They take care of the case investigation outside of our walls, we are responsible for the case investigation within our walls. So working with them to identify the infectious period of the student or faculty member where they're here. And then we start with that case, we talk to them about their exposure, who they were with, if it's a student, we've worked with the parent and the student. We look at their classrooms, we look at their related art schedule, their lunch, did they ride a bus? We try to look at all facets of the data they have. We were doing that today at one of our schools. Thankfully, the teachers and the principals, we have seating charts, we're keeping children together in different groups, which really has allowed us not seeing so many children home. Sometimes it might be three or four children based on the positive case. So nobody's ever sent home without complete guidance and approval from the Tennessee Department of Health. We discuss the situation, we talk about different things, sometimes they have additional questions and we answer those. And with all that information, we take that and we reach out to our parents to advise them based on the direct contact and what they need to do.
Well, thank you. I just, I know I hired everyone working to keep teachers or students as safe as possible and I really, and I know everyone's going above and beyond. So thank you for your work and thank you for your work and all of our teachers and everything that you do.
Ms. Norton, I know from my day job what an unstrong role you're serving, so thank you. Everybody's doing your own work, but I know that, like Greg said, you have to be inundated around the clock, so thank you for your dedication and your hard work in making sure our students and staff are protected.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have no unfinished business, we'll move to the consent agenda. All in favor, please say yes. Recommendations from the superintendent for action.
First recommendation, board, for the board tonight is recommendation for tenure staff members. And I'm supposed to read that into the record, and there are probably some watching to make sure their names on this list. It's a five-year, it takes five years at least to become tenured now in St. Tennessee. It's now three years as it used to be. I'm tenured in four school systems, so on the old way I am. So it's exciting and it is not one of those things that's deemed as permanent. So it's a big honor for our teachers and staff members and I'd like to read this list to you. From Cherokee, Anna Adams, Sharon Wiggins, from Fairmont, Derek Murphy, and Erin Wood, Mountain View, Tyree Jeffries, and Morgan Wood, Northside, Kimberly Boone, James Wesley Harris, Jennifer King, Donda Piler, Piler, excuse me, Megan Scott, Southside, Mallory Hoover, Brittany Melton, Amber Vaughn, Town Acres, Sean Murphy, Rachel Willis, Woodland, Ashley Davis, Christina Vines, from Indian Trail, Rachel Hall, Kelly Manus, Stephanie McKean, Yolanda Pagan, Brittany Williams, Miranda Wilson, from Liberty Bell, Richard Blackburn, Emily Broadhead, Deana Grant, Nicole Havert, Seth Johns, April Mulliken, Devon Floss, Brooke Vessler, Velsor, excuse me, Catherine White, from Science Hill, Ann Graves, Nicole Kelly, Gant Patterson, Candace Quaid, Sean Samuel, Catherine Stanley, Celia Street, Chadwick Robinson, Larry Waldron, and Systemwide, David Tims.
Other than Dr. Tims, are there others in the room who are listening? Dr. Tims, stand up and get a round of applause.
I don't know about that last name on the list, but I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to...
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, please. Is it roll call? Yeah, yeah, let's do roll call.
Mr. Hackner?
Yes.
Matty Hall?
Yes.
Mr. John McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Shultrie?
Yes.
Ms. Paul Shultrie?
Yes.
Mr. Timbaland?
Yes.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations and thank you all.
Next recommendation is a waiver request for community service hours for the class of two thousand twenty-one. David, Dr. Tims, would you come up and...
Yeah, I need to make a clarification.
Just make sure we're clear on what that means. We definitely want to recognize those students that are going to do this. This is not saying that we're not going to, so to clarify.
So of course, in the spring, we did this with a lot of the State Board of Education actions with credits last year. In talking with the staff at the high school, we've had a lot of our students, class of two thousand twenty-one, come to counselors expressing concern about being able to get their community service hours in because there are simply so many community organizations that are not allowing anyone to come in to volunteer right now. So this action tonight, and Ms. Treese and I had a great conversation about this today, is about the local requirement of Johnson City schools for forty hours of community service. That is not a state requirement for diploma. That's one, this is my third district that I've worked in, and it's the only district that's required that of seniors. So this would take action on the typical Science Hill graduate needing forty hours of community service for a diploma. However, and I wanted to make this clarification tonight, that we still do have the Tennessee Scholars Program, that a lot of our students do try to obtain enough community service hours for that. When I looked at the updated information today, and I would always encourage students to go and talk with their counselors, last spring, they lowered the number of hours required to be a Tennessee Scholar, which a lot of students like to achieve that status because it does open up a lot of doors to some scholarships, from eighty hours to sixty hours. So the action of the board tonight has no bearing on any other distinctions that students may be trying to obtain. It has bearing on the typical Science Hill requirement of forty hours of community service in light of COVID-19 this year for the class of two thousand twenty-one only.
Just to clarify that, so if I had, if my student was a class of two thousand twenty-one and they still had their community service hours because they'd started them as freshmen, they can still turn those in and get credit?
Absolutely, absolutely. We just do not want to deny anyone the opportunity to earn a Science Hill diploma who may only at this point have twenty hours and cannot find a community organization to fulfill those hours through.
Right. And then that, then those that choose to go on to be Tennessee Scholars...
Absolutely. And they will turn that documentation in through their counselors.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the request. For a second.
Second.
Dr. Tims, I hope if, if this motion passes, that we will remind our students that this is a great reason why you don't wait till the last minute.
And if they find stuff to do, do it.
If you've ever walked by that wall, it's one of my favorite walls near Councilor Row, that, it's the names of who was lacking what hours. There's always just a lot of names on that wall.
I've had three of them in miles. Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, in your post.
Thank you. I have two board policies on second reading, these are both related to special education, four point two zero two and six point five zero zero.
Motion to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, in your post. Okay, moving on to the new business, discussion regarding employee compensation. I think this is on here at Mrs. Hall's request, so I'll turn it over to her.
Okay, I think in our folder, we have some, some numbers too. You know, we've talked tonight, we've talked many times about, about how much time and effort our staff, our teachers, our assistants, our principals, everyone's putting in during COVID, people have gone above and beyond what we've asked them to do. And I think it's, and unfortunately, we were unable to give a raise this year. And I think our finances are still very uncertain, but I would like to move that we give our, everyone a bonus, all of our staff a bonus, five hundred dollar bonus for full-time and two hundred and fifty dollar for part-time workers, and that's across the board.
I'll second that. Discussion questions?
This would, by the way, come out of our fund balance. I would love to make this a raise, but I just think there's, there's too many uncertain things with our future funding and our, we came in a lot under our BEP. However, our, our sales tax continues to come in at a good, good level.
And just to be clear, you're making the motion based on the gross amount of five hundred and two fifty?
Yes.
Questions, comments?
I, I think it's well deserved also, and our sales tax is better than we originally thought it would be. So I have the same small reservations you do as far as making it permanent, like I write, because we still don't know what the future's going to hold with the coronavirus and everything else going on, have extra expenses for some of the remote learning and that kind of stuff. So I think this is a good happy medium.
Well, I was just saying, I think there's no question it's well deserved. I do struggle a little bit with, with doing it right now for two reasons. One, it's just we've got a lot of people in our community who have been out of work because of the pandemic, you know, they're taxpayers, they helped fund us. So I struggle with, with doing something like this when we have that in the community. And then secondly, of course, is, is our financial situation. It's still quite tenuous. The, the sales tax looks like it's coming in better than planned, but we did have that big hit off of the BEP. And we don't know what the sales tax situation is going to continue to look like. We also don't know what our property tax collections are going to look like. Those could be impaired this year. The public people may not work. So I do struggle. I support the motion. I will vote in favor of it, but those are, those are concerns that I have. I also do want to declare a conflict of interest here. I have a relative who works with the system, so I have a conflict of interest.
Mr. Chairman, put the mask up. I agree with what you stated. Instead of even to go further though, I wish it could be a thousand dollars bonus or it could be part of the salary. I have some deep concerns, like you mentioned, going forward and taking this amount out of fund balance. I've thought about this since our last meeting, and I'll, I'll support the motion. I've never been one in all my time to qualify a vote, but on this particular issue at this time, I feel like I need to make those comments. I will support the motion, but I want to reflect your comments, agree with you wholeheartedly, and then my two or three other comments.
Thank you. Other comments or questions about the motion? Other comments or questions about the motion?
I completely understand, stand those reservations. And I would feel differently if we were even at last year's level of sales tax, but again, it continues to come in at a higher level, I think, because of online shopping, and that gives me hope to cover at least the bonus.
One other question, maybe this is an answer. When do we anticipate this money going out?
Good question.
We set up everyone so we could run these numbers, so I mean, we could actually, in theory, probably get it out next week if we wanted to that quickly. That's, that's up to the board, but we're prepared to run it if we want to prove it.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have a question or an issue with the timing? Any other questions or comments? Let's do a roll call vote on this, please.
Mr. Tom Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Kathy Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Donald McInnes?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Tree?
Yes.
Ms. Paul Tree?
Yes.
Mr. Timbaland?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate also your comment on conflict of interest. I appreciate that. I see, I see things going on now. I've always been one for open meetings, not hybrid meetings or whatever you want to call meetings, not telephone meetings, not saying anything about those who want to use the telephone for meetings. I believe the open meeting means right here, like we're meeting. And I see conflicts of interest, in my opinion, increasing. And I don't think our system was set up, and I'm not talking specifically here, our other government meetings. I just don't feel like everyone's being honest about conflicts. So I would say I appreciate your comment, expressing your conflict.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hager, I appreciate it. Do you want to take those in?
We have one other item on the new business, and that has to do with the November board meeting. It's a three-week turnaround. Just wanted to make sure that we were able to do that and that staff would be ready for a meeting in three weeks. And I talked to Ms. Valley, she's the main person I was concerned about, she is fine with the three-week turnaround with the financials and everything.
So do you all want to, that'd be the first Monday in November, which I think I looked earlier, it's the second.
And that's our regularly scheduled meeting.
And that's the Monday before the election.
I will say, if we moved it to the ninth, it'd be four weeks between now and that one, and then four weeks between that one and the December one. Even it out a little more because the December won't be till seven since the first is on Tuesday.
I'm personally okay with whatever the board wants. It's a little uncomfortable for me because after the election, I'm definitely not going to be returning to the board. And so I'm kind of a super lamed up at that point.
This worrying won't happen that quick, though, will it?
Uh, this worrying will happen in December. So I mean, my term does continue until, but it's just awkward. But if everybody else wants to do that, I'm fine.
I personally think the fewer times we change our regularly date, the better. I think that's, that's a good, that's a good, so I would...
That's fine, I just point out it's a little more even if we change it.
We have changed a lot of dates this year, too.
Yeah, so why stop now?
Okay, so we'll keep it on November 2nd then.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, well, it's information on time, and for those of you that aren't interested in information, you can card if you want. If you're interested, feel free to say it. Thank you all.